I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 7, 2020 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
And would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And a reminder for council, since we are socially distanced a little bit, you're not right at your normal voting spots, so we're going to do voice votes tonight. So Ms. Brown will be calling on you when it comes time for votes, but your microphones do work where you're at. We've got three special presentations tonight, and the first one is caused by Chris Myers, who quit on us, so we have to swear in Amber Powers. Amber, you want to join us? And so if people have not heard, the official oath of office is very long. I state your name.
I, Amber Powers.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith
That I bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the Office of City Administrator
Perform the duties of the Office of City Administrator.
According to law
According to law.
And to the best of my ability
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state
Or of this state.
By force or violence
By force or violence.
And that during such time
And that during such time.
As I am in this position
That I am in this position.
I will not advocate
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state
Or of this state.
By force or violence
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause)
Now, you've got to say a few words.
(laugh) I can say a few.
I have nothing prepared, so I'll keep this short. I do thank you all for this opportunity, and really, with, under Chris's guidance and leadership over the past three years, I'm confident that she's laid a solid foundation through policies, procedures, and through her education that she's taught me, that I feel very confident in trying to fill her big shoes, and hopefully someday I'll fill them, but I'll keep working on it, and I thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. And Chris is officially retired as of last week, but her and her family joined us tonight, so we just want to take a little bit of time and recognize her. And with that, we've got a couple of proclamations. Chris, if you'd come up. First one we have, I think most everybody on the council is aware of the butterfly, but for the public that's not, this iron butterfly actually was created and patented and protected, so it's only Papillion that can create it. We only had a certain number of them forged, so it is a limited edition, and so we're always honored to give the butterfly, and it just says Christine Myers, presented July 7, 2020, for 27 years of dedicated and faithful service to the citizens and staff of the city of Papillion.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.[276.37][276.37](applause) And I've got an official city proclamation I'd like to give, recognizing the retirement of Christine L. Myers, 27 years of service to the city of Papillion. Whereas Christine L. Myers began her appointment to the city of Papillion as city clerk, deputy city treasurer in December 1992, was appointed to assistant city administrator January 1998, and city administrator on May 2017. And whereas Chris has been an invaluable asset to the city of Papillion and a key leader during a period of tremendous growth, under her leadership, Papillion has become an important piece of the economic engine of the state of Nebraska and Sarpy County. And Chris was instrumental in shifting the city's primary source of funding from property to sales tax. The population has more than doubled during her tenure while retaining high levels of service. And whereas Chris conveys the utmost level of professionalism and integrity in her positions and earned the respect of city employees, elected officials, and peers nationwide. And whereas Chris earned national recognition for the city of Papillion through Voice of the People Award for Built Environment and is one of only seven credentialed managers in Nebraska through the International City County Management Association. And whereas Chris's work has been highly valued and greatly appreciated through her years of service with the city, and her leadership will continue to have an impact on the city of Papillion for years to come. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the city of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Christine L. Myers for 27 years of dedicated service and countless contributions to the city of Papillion. We wish Chris the very best in retirement.
Thank you.
Absolutely.[376.44][376.44](applause) We've got a couple more. The governor sent one.[383.31][383.31](laughter) And if people are aware, Nebraska has a navy, and Chris has been appointed an admiral in the Great Navy of the state of Nebraska. To all who shall see these presents greetings. Know ye that reposing special trust and confidence in the patriotism, valor, fidelity, and abilities of Christine Myers, and knowing you to be a good person and a loyal friend and counselor, I have nominated and do appoint you an admiral in the Great Navy of the state of Nebraska. You are therefore called to diligently discharge the duties of admiral by doing and performing all manner of things thereto belonging, and I do strictly charge and require all officers, seamen, tadpoles, and goldfish under your command to be obedient to the orders as admiral, and you are to observe and follow from time to time such directions as you shall receive according to the rules and discipline of the Great Navy of the state of Nebraska. This commission to continue enforced during the period of your good behavior and the pleasure of the chief admiral of the Great Navy of the state of Nebraska. Given my hand in the city of Lincoln, state of Nebraska, 7th day of July 2020, Pete Ricketts.
Thank you, Rick.
Phil Green, would you join us? Where is he? Phil's got a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a former president of the Nebraska City Management Association and a current board member, it's my privilege to present to Chris an award that comes from the League of Nebraska Municipalities. They would have given this to her at the last meeting of the league, but it got canceled because of COVID-19, so it's my privilege to give this to her. It simply says, "Congratulations to Christine L. Myers, Papillion City Administrator, in recognition of 27 years of outstanding public service, dedication, and commitment to the city of Papillion, February 24, 2020." And all I can say is it's been my great privilege to know Christine from kind of a distance for many, many years and admire her, and it's sad that I only had four months to spend with her on staff, but congratulations.
Thank you very much.[514.12][514.12](applause)
Before we ask Chris to share a few words, I want to offer an opportunity for the council members. Might go by tenure a little bit, so I'll start with Councilman Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to be able to tell you that I'm going to try to keep it short, but I have to be a little careful, because too short, Chris will think there's something physically wrong with me. So I want to tell you, Chris, that in my two decades on the police department and 28 years on the city council for the city of Papillion, I've had the opportunity to work with six different city administrators, either with or for them, or both. And I will tell you, after having that experience, I can look at you and tell you straight from the heart that you are absolutely the best that I've ever worked with, period, out of all I've worked with. I remember the first project, if you want to call it a project, you and I worked on, and you may not remember this, but I sure do, was a different way to analyze and process annexation information in order to do it in a more fair and responsible way. And as a matter of fact, everybody still, we all use it here to this day. When we did that, I knew early on that, you know, this person's a keeper, and I do appreciate the opportunity to do that. One thing that you might, people might wonder is, over 27 years, Chris has worked with and for a number of administrations, and how she managed to continue to excel and do well with that many changes in mayors and city council people and so forth. And although there's so many reasons why, the financial acumen she brought and personnel acumen she brought, to me, it comes down to something very simple. Chris didn't tell people what they wanted to hear. She told people what they needed to hear, and there's a big difference. She was never afraid to tell any of us that we were going the wrong direction, or maybe we couldn't afford to do something right now. And that, I think, is what led to her surviving all this time. And coming from the banking industry like Chris did, she brought a real strength financially to the city that we really hadn't had, at least in my history, and because of that, she has put the city in a very strong financial position. And without that strong financial position, we wouldn't be as solid as we are now. She brought integrity and transparency to everything we did. And because of that, many cities, not just in our region, but across the country, would really wish to be in the financial condition we are. That all is a thank you to Chris because she really kept us on track and to do the right thing. You know, as much as her skill in the financial area has benefited the city a great deal, I don't want to shortchange the fact how well she worked with people. Everybody could talk to Chris, and I mean everybody. Even when time was at a premium, people could come and see her unannounced, which I often did, unannounced and talk to her, and she would listen and she would interact and was always professional in dealing with people. I always kind of joke with her since the virus hit that she's probably thankful the virus happened for one reason, if not any other, and that's simply because for the last two months of her tenure as city administrator, it prevented me from coming in and dropping in her office and telling long, boring stories to her all the time. But I did appreciate the time she spent with me. She's one of those rare people that could tell you no if you had a project in mind or wanted to budget for something. She could tell you no, and you didn't feel that bad about it, and that's a good talent to have. It was almost like she would put her arm around your shoulders all the while she was kicking you in the leg, you know? And that's a rare quality indeed. Just a personal note that I'll be quiet. My late mother-in-law, Joan Page, worked for Chris for a number of years, both as a city clerk and, I think, an executive assistant. And towards the end of her life, like many people do, they reminisce about things they've done and not done and so forth. One thing I always remember, my mother-in-law told me, she said that even though, this is a big admission for her, even though she could be a real thorn in Chris's side at times, she said, and she said, "You know, out of all my different careers I had and all the city administrators I worked for," she said, "Chris was the best boss I ever had." And I said, "Well, that doesn't surprise me." And she said, "But you know what's more important to me, and she's also the best friend I ever had." And that is quite a mouthful. What you've done for the city, we can never pay you back. No matter what we do, we can sit here and everybody speak, but it would take me hours to tell people all the wonderful things you did and how late you stayed here night after night, and every little thing that came up, you had to deal with. Despite the fact I'm sad you're leaving, I want you to have a great retirement. You are dinked, well, maybe not dinked so much. You deserve it, and you helped me, myself, you helped me professionally and personally to grow during your time here. I've become a better council person because you're here, and the highest compliment I think I could give you is this: You are the finest human beings I've ever had the privilege to know. Thanks.
I found it interesting that the plaque says that you began in December of 1992, working for the city of Papillion here. I began on the city council a little over a year later, January of 1994. So we've spent a lot of time together. Through that time, I've seen you grow and change tremendously. I hope you've seen the same from me.[924.32][924.32](laugh) You, I've always said that the most important people in city government are not the elected officials, but they are the employees. What makes the city government work, what makes it good, what makes it bad, are the employees. And I think overall, people think that the government of Papillion is pretty good, and Chris Myers is one of the reasons for that. We've served together during smooth times, we've served together during rough times. We've both learned a lot over that time. But through it all, a couple of things that the plaque says are tremendously true. It says, "You've earned the respect of employees and peers." As Steve pointed out, you certainly have our respect and my respect. Your work is highly valued. It certainly is true. I have sat in your office or sat with you many times and listened to what you think. You've been kind, you've been not so kind, you've been honest. Through it all, I learned that when Chris Myers tells you something, a smart person listens, and I've tried to listen. When Chris Myers gives you advice, a smart person tries to take it. I took it sometimes, okay? But I always realized that Chris Myers was somebody that you pay attention to, you respect, you do as much as you can to model yourself after the employee, Chris Myers. So I'll just say, over my term, thank you, Chris. I thank the citizens of Papillion and thank you.
Thank you. You know, when I first started, about 18, 20 years ago, the best thing that happened was I walked into Chris's office one day, and I had a couple of questions, and she refused to answer them. And I was like, "What? I didn't think this is the way it worked." She didn't give me the answer. She just asked me a whole lot of questions back, and some of them she was real straight up about. She was like, "No, I'm not understanding what you're saying," because I was still very new at it, so there was some clarifying. But as the conversation went on, Chris started asking questions that forced me to go back and think, "Oh, wait a minute, what are we really doing?" And it was a real opportunity to grow, and I always remember that. It was not so much about just knowing the answer, it was knowing to ask the questions. And I appreciated that you gave me that opportunity to be able to learn the position and helped guide me to ask more questions before just jumping to decisions. It was really a great opportunity for me, so thank you for forcing that. I found it interesting, though, about six years later, eight years later, I go into Chris's office, and she knew I was coming because I was confused about annexation, as Ms. Councilman Ingberg had talked about. And so I'm like, "Wait, I don't understand this. I'm going in and getting it cleared up." And Chris and I talked for about a half hour, and pretty soon I said, "Well, what has changed?" And Chris looks at me and says, "Well, really, not a lot has changed, Councilman Klug, but if you don't understand it..." And I said, "No, no, no, I'm good." And so we visited a little more, and Chris's comment to me was, "I'm glad. I get so nervous when you elected officials come in." And I was like, "Really?" Because Chris is such a professional. She always is prepared. The notebooks are always ready, the pencils, the mechanical pencils, are always ready to go with Sharpie or Dole erasers to get rid of the sharp markings. And it was just very intriguing to me to think about that and to realize that even when you're ready, being a little bit nervous can be a good thing, because it helps you to excel a little bit further. So, you know, those are just a couple of the lessons that I learned early on, and the more I've worked with Chris, the more I've appreciated those things. And I'm going to skip a whole bunch of the stories because we all have them, but what I want to finish saying is, thank you. We had a very enjoyable time at the park. That was wonderful, on a more personal note. We've had many opportunities to enhance things here at the city. We've had opportunities to look and go, "Oops," and fix little mistakes in ordinances and things like that. But we've just continued to grow, whether it's the city or personally. Our families have grown and changed, and it's been a great run, and I hope we get more days out on park benches and seeing pictures of each other's children. So thank you, Chris, for all those gifts you've shared.
Thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, just to start, I want to say congratulations to you for 27 years of service, and I think the mayor indicated that, a couple of things that he mentioned when he read from the plaque, dedicated and faithful service. There's no question that in my years here at the city, you were dedicated, you were faithful service to the community. You acted in a professional manner. You always provided detailed answers to questions that we had. There's no question that, Mayor also indicated, kind of your stature within the state of Nebraska from a standpoint of administrators, and you're a credit to your profession, and I would venture to guess that you probably also hold the unique status of being the only administrator retiring from a city, celebrating 150 years of life, essentially, during a worldwide pandemic. So in the future, when somebody asks you, you know, when you retire, because I have seen your moments, I can't remember things, there should be no reason why you can't remember when you retired during the 150th birthday of the city of Papillion and a worldwide pandemic. Again, congratulations to you.
Chris, when you took over, things were rolling here, and you continue to keep them rolling, and actually, you probably got it going better. And that's a lot of what you do. You're very professional, you guys work very hard. We got a great staff, and a great staff is here because of you, because the leader creates a great staff, which you have done. You've done an excellent, excellent job. I couldn't be more proud of sitting in this council seat because of the staff we have, and that's because of you on down. You are a great, great ambassador to Papillion, and you will be missed, but hopefully Amber's going to do just as good, she's going to have to. There's a lot of pressure on her. But anyway, I'd just like to say you are great to work with. You did everything you were asked to do. You probably went above and beyond a lot of times, and for that, thank you very much. Enjoy your retirement, and hopefully I'll see you on the golf course.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, like everybody else has mentioned, and what a great tribute to what you've accomplished here at this beautiful city and over the years. I think about my tenure here, and, well, I'm probably the oldest retiree here, I probably have the most experience of how to work into retirement, and you can put my number on speed dial if you need some help separating yourself from your husband after being together a certain period of time. But I think my wife would tell you that over the years, that you enjoy the retirement more and more, and you develop a different type of relationship with your husband, and you have a tendency to kind of forget about all the things that bugged you during your job and during your career, and the people like us. But in the end, retirement is a great thing, and I hope you and your husband have the opportunity for this country to get back in order to where you can feel free to just travel and do anything you want to do and feel good about it. So with that, I would say I've enjoyed immensely working with you. I've enjoyed our conversations about retirement, and like I said, if you need anything, any advice, or if your husband needs a little advice, he'd call me too, I guess, so. But I'm sure you both have a great retirement, and congratulations.
People aren't aware, I think it was 2000, you got the award from Sarpy County Economic Development, I think, when she was assistant city administrator, because she stepped into an acting administrator role back then, and that was the top award that year from Sarpy County Economic Development for her impact, and that was 20 years ago, and just had continued impact since then. If people understood the things she's been involved in behind the scenes, you could probably take almost every major achievement of Papillion, and Chris's fingerprints directly involved in that. That's what, some things just as small as maybe some quality issues, some efficiency issues, but also up to working with global site selectors and names like Facebook and Google. Chris Myers is known in those worlds. We, Papillion is very well respected in that world, and a lot of it goes back to the integrity that Chris has, the way she's ability, the way she can negotiate. I've seen her in some real tough negotiations, and coming out of it, she has retained the highest respect of her peers that she's negotiated against. So I think it tells you a lot about the individual in Papillion. High debt of gratitude, and we can't thank you enough. You want to share a few words?
I do.
Okay.
I'd be remiss if I did not. Now, I realize that I'm making the council meeting much longer than it was probably intended to be, so I don't know who's going to win the pool tonight, but I have a little control tonight. Normally, I don't, but... Thank you, Mayor Black. Thank you all for all of the accolades. Wow. What has happened since my start with the city over 27 years ago? Lots. But simply stated, I've been provided many opportunities to help shape the Papillion we know today and into the future. For those opportunities, I thank you. I thank you, Mayor Black. You were always a mentor, and you're a leader. Thank you. Thank you to council members Ingberg, Mumgarth, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Glover, Gaines, and Sunday. You showed trust and encouragement. You rewarded me for a job well done and pushed me to do better. Thank you. I could not have asked to work for and with the better group of elected officials. During this 27-year journey, I was not alone. Department heads were at my side, guiding me to make the best decisions for our community. I've made some wonderful friendships that I will treasure forever. Papillion is fortunate to have the best employees leading our city. Amber will continue to steer this group to continued success. Thank you all for all of your support over these 27 years. I've had the pleasure of working with many business partners, seeking a common goal, to make Papillion the best place to live, work, and play. Thank you for your support and contributions as well. Lastly, and importantly, a huge thank you to my family, Dalton, my husband of 27 years, my son Nate, my daughter Casey, her husband Kyle, and my grandchildren Connor and Callan. Thank you for being here today and with me along my journey. So what's next for me? Relaxing on the deck? Warming up next to the fire pit? Working on my golf game? Several of you have seen me golf, you know I need some work. And spending some precious time with my family. In closing, I want to share an important lesson that I learned while working for the city. What Papillion has taught me is that family is not just about those related to you by blood. Family now can mean so much more, and does for me. Family now includes those people that I have met along the Papillion journey that I can call my friends. Thank you for that lesson and so many more. It has been my honor to work with such great people. Thanks to my entire family for the opportunities, the memories, and the friendships. Thank you.[1794.41][1794.41](applause)
Here's a reception for Chris down on the second floor, and just so we can get some people out of the council chambers for some separation. Those that aren't part of the meeting and want to go down to that, you are excused for that, and then council can go after the meeting. So, again, congratulations, Chris, and thank you for your impact. We also have a presentation, a special one by the Papillion 150 Committee. Papillion 150, even though we've got COVID and stopped a lot of things, if you look around and see some of the things they've been doing, Papillion 150, again, is having a really long-term impact. You just look, look at that Butterfly Bench project and the positive reactions from the community. That's been tremendous. But there is a special project that has been in the works, and it's in a planning stage. And we have Carla Rupeiper with us tonight to give an update on that one. Carla?
Good evening. And, how do you know me? There we go. Well, good evening, and I know Chris just left, but I have to tell you, from my heart, she was a great boss, a great mentor, and I do consider her my friend. And it was a true pleasure to work with Amber for the three years prior to stepping into your new role. Congratulations. And so, I'm Carla Rupeiper, for those who may not know me. I just wanted to introduce myself. Last fall, I was asked to be the Chair of the Papillion 150 Project, specifically the Committee for the Butterfly Habitat. And I have three other members of my committee, two of whom are here. Both of them are master gardeners. That would be Joyce Stranglin and also Michael Williams. And so, I met them through various other connections in town, but being master gardeners, if we're going to be talking about butterflies and gardening, I wanted them on the committee. And the other member is Mary Yokum. So, Mary was raised here, had a number of brothers here, and so she has Papillion in her heart as well. So, we're all humble volunteers with an interest in Papillion gardens and butterflies. So, that's what brings us here. We appreciate the opportunity to provide you with a very quick overview of a unique Papillion 150 project that we think will contribute to this community for years to come. So, we want to share with you our plans for a new 50-foot by 60-foot garden, butterfly impollinator garden that will be located on the north side of Veterans Park. It was designed to become, it's been professionally designed, actually, by the same group, Vario, who designed, originally designed the Veterans Park vision concept. So, we have been able to tap into what they already know about the park, and to make sure that this, this garden that we are planning will be very consistent with and complimentary of the Veterans Park. So, just to give you a little bit of history, we were, we were tasked as a committee, really, last August, so we're not quite up to the first year, with the, with the thought that we would do a project that would be aimed at saving the butterflies, creating a butterfly impollinator habitats, and educating our community about the importance of doing, doing so. We had lots of ideas. We had to scale those down. We finally came up with the creation of a butterfly impollinator garden, because Papillion and its residents have such an affinity with butterflies, longstanding affinity. So, we've, we've planned a butterfly garden that is constructed in the unique shape of a butterfly, and it will be filled with perennials, primarily perennial plant materials that will attract those, in some cases, threatened and endangered species. We intended, from the beginning, for this to be a living classroom. Once it is planted and it's there, it will be creating an opportunity for all residents and children to learn about how, these habitats. We determined that we would need a, a high-profile location, as well as one that is irrigated, that will help sustain that, that garden and is easily accessible to the public. And we also, especially in talking to Tony Gallin, and I'll give him a lot of credit for a number of things that we came up with, it was very important that we also create a group of individuals from the community that are willing to be dedicated to maintaining this garden over the years to come. So, all of that doesn't fall on the city. So, the committee approached Tony Gallin, and he, like I said, he helped us think through many, many parts to the garden. So, let me just quickly go back. You'll see in this open area, this open lawn area, it was Tony who first called our attention to, this area is already irrigated. And he also indicated that, years back, on one of the earlier vision concepts of this park, there was some thought that there would, in fact, be a garden there. But I don't think the plans had specifically gelled for that garden at the time, and there were so many other details really focused more on the veterans pieces and the veterans' walls. But Tony was really good to help us. We were exploring lots of different locations. He helped us be, he led us to this area and just suggested it. Our committee also approached Councilman Ingberg with the concept. I know he's helped to oversee the development of Veterans Park for so many years. And he too, along with the committee, we want to be very mindful that this garden is consistent with the, the vision of what was intended for Veterans Park. And so, he's been very, very helpful in guiding us, as well as sharing information that we've been talking about with the mayor, our city administrator, and other city staff. So, with regard to that volunteer workforce that we've talked about already, and we haven't even, you know, formally launched it, I guess this is, if anything, maybe a formal launching, but we already have over 40 people that have stepped forward and said, hey, I'd really love to, to learn more about gardening and help out in a number of ways. So, we'll find a way to get them concretely involved. As the garden design was being finalized by Vario, we began reaching out to all of the local community organizations, Lions, Papillion Gardens Club, Midlands Community Foundation, all the various, I wouldn't say all, but as many as we could reach out to for their interest, and also their financial support at some point in time. And then in March, as you well know, the wheels began to come off of the wagon a little bit with regard to COVID, and it threatened to derail the project. However, we've now determined that, we've come to the conclusion that the pandemic was really a mixed blessing for the project, because it's given us a little more time to be a little more deliberate and organized in our fundraising and our other efforts to get those details in place. So, that brings us to the current. So, here is the vision for, for that garden. Let's see. Yep, that's not what I wanted to do. There we go. So, the thought is that you'll see that, right now, throughout the garden, I'm sorry, throughout Veterans Park, there are already these circular walkways. And the thought is that a circular walkway will continue up to where the garden will be placed. This mouse works very differently from mine. But there you can see that, that's the basic design that Vario has come up with. And as a committee, we were thrilled with, with the design, the wings, the thorax, the abdomen portions. Those, those are all individual garden beds that will be planted with three seasons of perennials, as well as a few annuals each year. And there at the head of the butterfly, there'll be a round, black disc, not of, not deep, but it will be a bubbler that will provide a water source for the pollinators, as well as just for those who are there to enjoy the garden. It'll be nice and soothing sounds. And then there'll be benches placed around the, the garden, as well as there will be some of the, the walls as part of the actual structure that will provide some seating space there. This will be an ADA-accessible garden, and our goal is to complete the construction of this garden this coming fall. That's the goal. Obviously, the goal will depend upon whether we can finish raising the rest of the money. We have a nice start on the money, but we're, you know, things slowed down a little bit with COVID, as you know. But I think we're, we're going to be getting a response from other individuals that are community-minded, and this is the type of project that they can get excited about. There's one other key component to what we would like to see as a committee, and that is a sculpture. It's a beautiful butterfly sculpture that will be 16-foot tall. It is, would be created by Matthew Plachek. He is a renowned artist in the Omaha area. He's also known nationally and internationally. I have a very thick booklet of all of the various pieces that he's done throughout the city, as well as other locations. But he has done pieces, if you drive around the city, you see pieces, and you won't realize that this is the individual who has created those. But he's very excited, this is a piece that he actually had created in the past, but he's very excited about the opportunity for us to be able to include one of these beautiful monarch butterfly structures with our garden. And we're, we're just, would be thrilled to be able to find a sponsor that is willing to take that one. So, we, we have a "coming soon" sign that's being printed up and prepared as we speak. Hopefully, we'll have it posted within the next couple of weeks. It'll be posted at the entrance of Veterans Park, where the parking lot is. So, as people are coming in, it gives them an idea of what's coming soon. And garden updates will be featured on the Papillion 150 website. Trent Albers has, is working, I know, to develop a new link, a tab, on that, that website for us. And donations can be made to the project on that website. And he will also be including updates on social media for us. In addition, just to be able to have a broader opportunity for everyone to contribute, even if it's $5 toward this kind of project, say I was part of it, we're looking into creating a fundraising page on social media to make that easy. So, that's it. I promised to keep this brief. I don't know how brief that was, but if you have any questions, but we're excited to share the concept with all of you. And hi, Mark, and he was part of the initial designing as well. So, anyway, I want to thank the city, everyone who's contributed, particularly Councilman Ingberg, and Tony Gallin has been just great help on this project as well. So...
Thank you, Carla. And I just want to thank you. You got the passion to get the committee going. I want to thank the garden club for being a part of it. The foundation's playing a huge role. Thank you, Laura. Just amazing work. And some people may say it's just a garden, but I don't think people realize it was just a planter and a few flowers that created Veterans Park. That was the impetus behind the entire thing. So, to have the garden continue growing that there, that's a big thing. And, and public art has become a big part of Papillion 150 as well. So, it fits a lot of things. So, thank you very much.
It'll all tie together.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Mayor, if I could just...
Yes, sir.
In addition to you, I wanted to thank Carla, and Micah, Joyce, and Tony. This is one of the, other than Veterans Park, I've had a great deal of fun working with these folks to get this put in. I wanted to mention too, that before we did anything, Carla and I met with people from the American Legion to ensure that, that piece will fit with Veterans Park. It sits back and away from it anyway, but, and they were thrilled with the idea. So, the veterans are on board too. And if anybody can find anyone that would be willing to donate to them, it's going to be a fantastic park when it's finished. We've already had, or they have had inquiries about it already, and it's not even broken ground yet. So, again, I want to thank them for all their volunteer time they've put in, because they've really done a great job with it.
Thank you very much. And everybody that's here for a regular agenda item, thank you for your patience. It's rare that we have presentations, let alone three of them, and, and the presentations were as long as what a typical council meeting is. So, thank you very much for your patience, but they are really important presentations for Papillion and our, and our life and our history. With that, administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I'll make this short. Welcome back to the chambers. We are putting Plexiglas up. It should be up for the next meeting, so we'll try to get back a little bit more to normal with having staff back up here once that Plexiglas is here. And thank you for your patience with us as we've been trying to navigate this new terrain. Starting next week, Mayor Black, Phil and I will be meeting with you each individually to discuss the upcoming budget. Department heads have worked hard this year to present department budgets that take into account, into account the financial uncertainty that we're currently facing with our revenues. And you are all invited next Wednesday, July 15th, to the final BAST diet study event of the summer at Hallock Park. The event is hosted by the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission. It starts at 7:00 PM. They're really excited for this event. They said that there's been a lot of public interest, and they're looking forward to giving a more formal presentation next week for that. And then finally, there will be a Finance and Administration Committee meeting on July 21st, and the meeting will be held at the Landing, so we can have proper social distancing. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Klug? Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents, opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Mumgarth?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
6808.
Motion passes. We have two items on the agenda directly related to the Zoom meetings we've been having. The governor did declare the state of emergency, and he waived some state regulations that enable us to have Zoom meetings, and I think every elected body in the state did those. But the League of Municipalities is giving some guidance that they think every local body, when they get back together physically, should ratify all of the ordinances that was done when we were together virtually. Just, I think, to check some boxes to make sure that if there ever was a question, did the governor have the authority to do what he did, it doesn't invalidate the things we did. So, the first one is Item D1, Ordinance 1887, an ordinance to ratify all ordinances approved during council meetings held remotely pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-03, signed by Governor Ricketts on March 17, 2020. Sir, a council member, would they introduce?
No.
Can't hear with the masks on. Thank you, Mr. Stube. Item F1, Resolution R200107, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to prove a Class D liquor license for Riffs, Inc., doing businesses Papillion's quick and friendly. 802 Terra Plaza, Suite 102, Papillion, Nebraska 68046, and a manager application for Faruk Rachmov. And this is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm a proponent for it.
Thank, and could you state your name for the record?
Sherri Hedy.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Oh. Did the applicant want to speak?
No.
Good, okay. Thank you. We'll recognize that you're here. Any, any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R200107?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Jaworski. Is there any council discussion? See none? Please vote.
Mumgarth?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Jaworski?
Yes.
Klug?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
6808.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F2, Resolution R200108, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to prove a recommendation to approve an application received by Sarpy County from Haven 150 LLC to connect the property legally described as tax- County from Haven 150 LLC to connect the property legally described as Tax Lot 3A1A2, located in Section 2 Township 13 North, Range 11 East, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 12370 South 150th to the Sarpy County Southern Ridge Phase 1 Outfall Sewer pursuant to the County Industrial Sewer Act. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200108?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Kluk. Second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? Please vote.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kluk.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
6808.
Motion passes. Item F3 is related to the COVID and the governor meetings. Resolution R200112, a resolution to ratify all resolutions approved during council meetings held remotely pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-03, signed by Governor Ricketts on March 17, 2020. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200112?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kluk.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
6808.
It's all the regular, motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Public Safety Committee met. We did not have a quorum, and I believe the chair is, one of the council members, absent, but maybe, trying to remember who's on that committee. I know Mr. Mumgarde is on it. Any report?
Jason and I, we're the only ones there. We discussed with staff several items, took no action. And that's about all I can report on it. We did, we got some questions answered on the downtown street pedestrian situation. That's basically put on hold for a while. Some of the signs that we've approved, speed limit signs, those, we gave some guidance on that. Those will be going up as soon as possible. We had some discussion about the idea of having the, having an entertainment district or some sort of a festival area in the alley behind the businesses on the east side of Washington Street. Talked about the pros and cons. I think the staff is going to set up some meetings with some of the business owners there to get their input, and then we'll see if we go forward on that.
Thank you very much. And since there was not a quorum, we'll probably recall that meeting again for some official recommendations. Thank you very much. Any comments from the floor? Any council comments? Mr. Jaworski.
I just want to touch, based on the food vendors downtown. I mean, if we can't get it into the alley, why can't we put a lane closure set up when they're set up there? I mean, that's plenty of notification that there's a food truck there, so maybe that's something we got to start looking at, too.
Thank you. We'll note that. Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarde.
Mr. Stube has pointed out that we did discuss one other item that I'll just lay out there so that people are aware what's going on. The curfew ordinance that was adopted several weeks back, there's a great desire to seek some amendments, improvements, and/or just repeal it, but certainly come back, look at what we've done, whether we can do better, have a public hearing on that. We're going to put some suggestions in writing for some amendments, have those sent to the committee, and then we expect that ultimately there will be something in front of the city council with regard to that curfew ordinance.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
I know you're not the chairman of the committee, but I have some suggestions or two about some things to tweak with that. Does the committee prefer to have it before you have a discussion, or wait till it's actually up for a vote?
I would say you go ahead and send any suggestions you have to Councilman Gaines, and he'll give it to the committee. And I mean, basically, it was, well, let's sit down and see if there's any ways to improve this. Do we want to go forward with it? Do we want to keep it? Do we want to do it away, do away with it? All those questions are open, so yes, if any council members have any suggestions at all, I think they should send them to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Still not a lot going on, just because of COVID keeping things shut down. The, what were the daily meetings, the multi-jurisdictional with the Health Department, we've moved that to once a week on Thursdays. So if you've got any questions, issues of concerns, if you shoot them to me by end of day Wednesday, I can usually bring them up in that meeting, or if you got a question, then reach out on Thursday, and we give you an update on what's going on. The United Cities had an update. Legislature will be going back into session for its last 17 days, I think on the 20th. Probably most of what they're going to just be dealing with is the budget, property tax relief, and the incentive bill, and then the big project at the Med Center. Those are probably the main things they'll do, so I don't expect a lot will be introduced, but we're keeping a close eye just in case. So if you have questions about the legislature, let us know. And then Sarpy County Economic Development just had a regular board meeting, but no major updates there again, because things just kind of stalled out a little bit with COVID as well. And then the wastewater agency had its board meeting, and real, no major decisions there yet either. Other than that, we, as an encouragement, we have continued to have some pre-application meetings with developers and site selectors that are still working on projects, and Papillion's on the radar. So it doesn't seem like those types of long-term projects have slowed down, which is encouraging. So that's most of it. Again, a reminder, the F and A Committee will meet on the 21st, and then the next city council meeting again. The governor suspended the virtual, so it will be physically here for the next council meeting. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Mumgarde.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Kluk.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
6808.
We are adjourned, and Chris's reception is in the break room on the second floor.